Hello, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. I'd like to do a roll call vote. Appearances. Trustee Alpert.
Present.
Trustee Corrigan.
Present.
Trustee Soberman.
Present.
Trustee Hagan.
Present.
And I'm Mayor Curly. I'm here. Will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty, and justice for all. Can we remain standing, please, for a moment of silence for veterans, first responders, individuals, and families in need, as well as the people of Ukraine, for their safety and security? Thank you. Please sit down. Upcoming meetings. A workshop meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 25, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. A regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 2, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. We're a little late on the public hearing. It's 7:14 right now, and we'd like to open a public hearing for the 2022-2023 tentative budget. Mr. Chino, our treasurer, please explain.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, on March 7, the Village Board received a copy of the tentative budget from the clerk, who had received it from the mayor, and that budget was also posted on the village website that evening. In short, the general fund, the appropriations are going to rise 1.5% from $15.8 million to $16.1 million. The estimated revenues are going to rise 6.2% from $3.8 million to $4 million. And our taxable assessed valuation has increased 0.1% from $132 million to $132.1 million. The net result is a 0% tax increase. The tax rate on a per $1,000 of taxable assessed valuation will remain the same at $91.09. On the water fund, the appropriations are going to rise 2% from $2.13 million to $2.17 million. Estimated revenues are going to remain essentially unchanged, other than the water rents themselves, and the water cost on an average single-family home will increase approximately $5 per year. For the sewer fund, the appropriations remain essentially the same, increasing only $31,000 or 0.1%. The estimated revenues, other than the sewer rents, are going to remain unchanged from the prior year, and there, the sewer cost on the average single-family home will increase approximately $4 per year. And that is the summary of the budget, Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion up to actually open up the public hearing for the public. I have a motion, please.
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Motion by Trustee Alpert. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Right, this is now the public. Anyone from the public that has anything to say, talk about the budget, more welcome to come up now. Okay. Dean and I see no public comment. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing, please. Can I get a...
Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan made a motion to close the public hearing. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second. Trustee Soberman. Can I? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We now will open up the public hearing for the water and... Can I do the water and sewer together, Mike? Do them together or do them separate?
He has already done that.
We've done that? I do them together. Yeah, go ahead. I'll make... Can I get a motion, please, to open up the public hearing, the water and sewer rates, please?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Motion by Trustee Corrigan. I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Alpert.
Second by Trustee Alpert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, I guess, Mr. Chino, you know, explain where the rates, how it would be going up about the household, about $5 per year, and the sewer, about $4 per year. This is actually a use tax, so if you use less, you pay less. Use more, you pay more. So, you know, try to save your water, and hopefully your kids go to college so they're not using your water and sewer. So...
Mayor, the only thing I would add to that is that the standard rate of just having water service, there's a base rate that has not changed, and our levels or tiers of when they increase, when you use up to 70 units of water, there's one rate if you use over 70 units of water, you would have a higher rate. The average household uses about 30 units of water per billing period, so that's basically it. There's nothing more to add, really, to what I already presented for the water and the sewer.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chino. Any comments? Anyone have anything to say about the water and sewer?
You may have an extra question.
Dean and I see none. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing on the water and sewer rates?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Motion by Trustee Corrigan. I get a second, please.
Second.
Second by Trustee Soberman. Soberman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right. Now, I guess, we'll go on to the attorney. Reference to the grant.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
It's just to grant a permit for the Suffolk Chamber of Commerce to hold their Suffolk Street Fair downtown Sunday, May 1, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The Chamber of Commerce has been doing it for years, but I discovered that there was... You know, there's a lot of cost to the taxpayers, so I actually sat down with the Chamber of Commerce, and I negotiated, and they're giving more back so the taxpayers, it isn't such a big load on them, with eventually, hopefully, that it's self-sufficient and the taxpayers never have to support in this. They also, I recognize, you know, that the insurance might have been a little low, and they happily raised their insurance to protect the taxpayers and from any financial loss we could have in the future. Can I please have a motion to grant the permit for the Suffolk Chamber of Commerce, please?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Trustee Hagan. I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Alpert.
Second by Trustee Alpert. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Another one, we have the Sacred Heart Church to hold a circus on the Gastei Monetary Grounds on June 2 at 6:00 p.m., and June 3 at 5:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. Can I get a motion, please, to approve the circus?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Motion by Trustee Corrigan. I get a second?
Second.
Second.
By Trustee Soberman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. I have a resolution here appointing Howard Cohen as court attendant on call. It's in the budget. There's no difference for us. The court has a certain amount that they allow. What they're actually doing is just putting another officer who's available to work if other guys aren't available to work. There's no more cost. Their number is their number, and just to keep the judge and anyone else in the courtroom safe. And it's cheaper to have a police officer in the courtroom. It's important. So, can I have a motion appointing Howard Cohen as court attendant on call?
Trustee.
Go ahead.
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan. I get a second, please?
Second.
Trustee Soberman.
Second by Trustee Soberman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Coffey, Fire Department, please, sir.
Good evening, Village Board. Two items on the agenda for the Fire Department this evening. The first item is the acceptance of a new member to the volunteer host company, Matthew Friedman.
Please, can I have a motion to accept the new member, Matthew Friedman, for the volunteer host company, please?
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Motion made by Trustee Alpert. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Second by Trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. And the second item is a resolution that should be before you to extend coverage under the New York State Volunteer Firefighter Benefit Law for members participating in Rockland County emergency service teams.
Can you explain that to the public a little more?
Can you explain it, I think?
Yeah.
I'd ask you that.
Yeah, it's basically just to extend the coverage that they receive from the state, well, from the village, to protect them, to participate in Rockland County teams, such as the hazmat team and the technical rescue team. It's just an extension of their coverage.
Right. So what we're doing is, we're sending other people for other training and doing other duties that share in the county, because there's mutual aid all over the county, so by... Just saying that we still cover them under their insurance to keep them safe in case they get hurt outside of the village, just as other communities come to our village to help us.
Correct.
So, can I please have a motion to extend the coverage under the New York State Volunteer Firefighters Benefit Law?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Trustee Hagan. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Second by Trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Police Department, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Good evening, everyone. On the month of March, the Police Department responded to 779 calls for service. We're happy to announce that we're starting up our dare dances again. So far, we have two scheduled, one April 29 and one on June 10. Both are going to be held at the community center from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. and are open to all Suffolk Central School District students in the 5th and 6th grades. I'd just like to thank Kathy Mills and the recreation staff for assisting us with these events and providing us with the community center. As you guys know, these events are very well-attended, and the kids have a great time at them, so we're glad to be starting them up again. As I discussed with the board at the last workshop meeting, our boller wrap device and body cameras have been delivered. We anticipate having both technologies on patrol within the next few weeks after all of our officers have received training on them. As far as agenda items, I have two agenda items for the board's consideration this evening. The first item is a request to declare an Identix fingerprint scanner a surplus so it can be listed for auction or disposed of. That scanner was used for our old LiveScan system, which was replaced in 2020, making the item obsolete for us.
Okay. Do they get a motion declaring a fingerprint scanner by the Village of Suffolk no longer being needed for municipal purposes and to be surplus? Motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Alpert?
Yeah.
Second by Trustee Corrigan, Joe?
Sure. Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. My second agenda item, as I'm sure you all recall, at the last Village Board meeting, the board voted to nominate Mr. Tyler Stark to the position of police officer full-time. Mr. Stark has since been cleared by the Rockland County Department of Personnel for Employment, so at this time, I would respectfully request that the board appoint Mr. Tyler Stark to the position of police officer full-time.
Can I please have a motion appointing Tyler Stark as probationary police officer in the Village of Suffolk? Motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan. Second, please?
Second, Trustee Alpert.
Second by Trustee Alpert. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Could we now do a little ceremony? Bring them up?
I'd like to call Tyler Stark up to the podium so he can be administered his office button.
Tyler, you're lucky, man. I can't do it, but I can now repeat if anyone wants to.
Are you ready? Okay. I state your name.
I, Tyler Stark.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
You're a great... Thank you, God. I'm honored. Thank you, Father. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Congratulations. Everybody here, come close.
You got to hold up your shield.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. So... Thank you. Great job. Thank you, Father. I'm honored. Thank you, Father. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Congratulations. Everybody here, come close. Come close.
You got to hold up your shield.
Yeah, you got to hold up your shield. Yeah. Thank you. So... Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations. That's right. We need to show... Okay. Everybody here, come close. Come close.
You got to hold up your shield.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. So... Thank you. Great job. Thank you, Father. I'm honored. Thank you, Father. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. If anyone wants to... Yeah. Are you ready? Okay. I state your name.
I, Tyler Stark.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. [applause] You're a great... Thank you, Father. I'm honored. Thank you, Father. Congratulations. Thank you, Father. Congratulations. Thank you. 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 Thank you very much. Very much.
Culture and Recreation, please?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Village Board. A few things that we have coming up. This Saturday will be a very busy and happy day in the village. The Suffolk Little League is starting their opening day on Saturday, and there will be a parade down Lafayette Avenue, so we're going to meet here at Village Hall at 9:00, and then proceed down to the ball fields by 9:30. They're going to get on the road and then do the opening ceremony at the ball fields. And then that, then an hour later, at 11:00, we are going to go back to the gazebo for the egg hunt, which will be at 11:00, and it's open to Village of Suffolk residents. We're looking forward to it. We will announce the coloring contest winners, which we've been getting a lot of nice submissions for, so it's going to be a nice afternoon. April 21 and April 22, we are going to have two events at the center. They're going to be family-kid events. We're going to do a basketball event on Thursday, and then we're going to have a Kid Zone on Friday, so we're looking forward to having those on the 21st and 22nd at the center. April 23, we are going to have Storytime Yoga with children, and the library was kind enough to give us some books that we're going to donate to the families. We're going to give it to the people that come out for Storytime Yoga, so if you're around on the 23rd, come by the center. And then the following weekend is the Saturday, April 30. We'll be having Keep Rockland Beautiful, and we just started putting the flyer out to people and we're getting emails already for that. That will also be the Arbor Day Ceremony, where we plant a tree, so we're going to have two events on that day, so it'll be a nice afternoon for the village. So, that starts at 9:00 as registration, and then 12:00, we will be having... It finishes at 12:00, so if you're around on the 30th and you'd like to participate, we would love to have everyone.
Are you going to do the tree after?
We usually do the tree in the middle, so we get everybody registered for Keep Rockland Beautiful at 9:00. Then they get to their location, so I'll talk with Fred and Charles, but I believe 10:00, we're going to do the Arbor Day Ceremony.
Where's the tree getting planted?
That's to be decided, too. Yeah, we haven't decided. I was just talking, Charles and I were talking this afternoon. We don't know the exact location, but we will get that information. I know you always come with your camera, so we will make sure you know.
If any board member has a suggestion on where that tree should go, feel free to
Are you going to do the tree after?
We usually do the tree in the middle. So we get everybody registered for Keep Rockland Beautiful at 9:00. Then they get to their location. So I'll talk with Fred and Charles, but I believe 10 o'clock, we're going to do the Arbor Day Ceremony.
Where, where's the tree getting planted?
That's to be decided too. Yeah, we haven't, I was just talking, Charles and I were talking this afternoon. We don't know the exact location, but we will get that information. I know you always come with your camera. So we will make sure you know.
If any board member has suggestion on where that tree should go, feel free to let us know.
46 Park Avenue, right in the front.
46 Park Avenue.
Yeah, right in the front.
That's trustee Corrigan's house. I think we're, we're not going to vote for that one. I'm sorry. But thank you for your suggestion.
Can't have sidewalks and curbs. I want a tree.
And I think that's it.
All right, good, very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, we'll do public comment. Can I have a motion to open up public comment, please?
Just a move. Trustee Hagan?
Uh, trustee Hagan makes a motion. Can I get a second, please?
Second trustee Corrigan.
Second by trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes.
Now we'll open up, anyone have any comments to make, public session?
Good evening Mayor and Board. Good evening everybody. Since we're talking about April 30th, let me add a third event to the day.
Oh my goodness.
Frank, the nuns aren't here. I wouldn't, I wouldn't act up if I were you. After a lot of work, a lot of hard work, a lot of back and forth, we are going to do not just Battery Saturday on April 30th, if the board gives us the approval. We'll do it down here in the parking lot here at Village Hall as we do every year. Collection of batteries, paints, medications, small appliances, household electronics, no tires. Fred, you hear that? No tires?
I heard that.
Just making sure. Steve, that'll be April 30th. Making sure you heard that. As the board had approved the, the initial date where we got snowed out, I'm hoping that the board will once again give us approval for this date. And we will start spreading the, the good word tonight and tomorrow.
Thank you Bruce. I'm going to make a motion. Can I get a motion, please, to approve Battery Saturday on April 30th, please?
Motion trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan, can I get a second, please?
Second trustee Albert.
Second may be trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you, board.
Get moving on communications. I'll try to share it myself also.
Appreciate that very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
And everybody pack a lunch.
Seeing no further public comment, I'd like to make a motion to close the public comment section, please.
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan, can I get a second, please?
Second trustee Sablman.
Second by trustee Sablman, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. What I'd like to do, if we could do it, can we do a consent agenda on the items? Charles, I apologize, Mr. Zawiki, would you like to come up, please? If, if Charles reads them all out, is it okay for everyone, as we discussed in the workshop, to do a consent agenda and vote for him after he goes through them? Is everyone in favor of that? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Then Charles, please go ahead. We're going to, you go ahead and do it. We're going to do a consent agenda for all the items together, okay? Try to move things along.
Authorizing payment of application number seven to Pinguin Deutsch for power, backup power for critical facilities project. Authorizing, second with next resolution, authorizing payment of application number seven to Pinguin Deutsch for the hardening of water treatment plant project. The next resolution, authorizing Mayor Curley to execute a contract with Pinguin Deutsch for professional services in conjunction with the new water meter and data collection system and ancillary components in the amount of $12,800. The next resolution, authorizing the superintendent of Public Works to attend 2022 New York State Flood Plan and Storm Water Managers Conference. Next resolution, declaring various vehicles owned by the Village of Suffolk no longer being needed for municipal purposes and to be surplus. Next resolution, setting a public hearing Monday, May 2nd, 2022 at 7:02 for the purpose of the acceptance of the annual New York State DEC MS4 report. Next resolution, awarding the bid for a Gannon stainless steel dump body. Next resolution, authorizing solicitation of bids for municipal lot B drainage improvement project. Next resolution, authorizing solicitation of bids for municipal lot B paving improvement project.
Can I please have a, does anybody have any questions on those items?
Yes, I, I do.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I was, I was, we'll go, go ahead, Steve.
I didn't have one.
Okay. I guess I'm hearing the echo with these earphones. But I was wondering, I am hearing an echo, on the solicitation of bids for the, for the stainless steel dump body. You were not able to get.
No, we're awarding the bid. We're awarding the bid on that one, Fred.
What?
We're awarding the bid on the Gannon stainless steel dump body. We're awarding the bid.
We already have it.
I was just asking Charles.
Right.
What is, what is the reason that nobody else bid?
Well, I mean, that does happen from time to time. This was, there isn't that many distributors of that particular brand dump body. I understand there may be two or three in the general area. There were two, there were two vendors that did request the bid packet. Only one submitted a bid.
Okay. Because just as a matter of procedure, it's always terrible when there's only, you know, one bid in general.
Right. But yeah, it was, actually it was, came in a little bit lower than we had anticipated. So it was.
That's nice to hear. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. I'd like to make a motion for the, all the items.
I so move.
Then Mr. Zawiki explained to us. Can I get a motion?
Trustee Sablman.
Motion made by trustee Sablman, can I get a second, please?
Second trustee Hagan.
Second by trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Treasurer Michael Janito, please.
Mayor, we only have one item before the board, and that is the authorization to use up to $13,000 of ARPA 21 funds for a vital statistics software that'll allow the town, the village clerk's office to produce birth and death certificates and maintain a system of those in a computerized system as opposed to what they do now, which is typewriters.
Okay. As treasurer said here, we, we've been for years just using a typewriter to do the birth and death certificates. So we're trying to make it better for the public and better for the people in the office too. That way they'll have them in the system. They can come in after it's done. It'd be a lot easier for, for someone to get it from, from us when they come here versus going to a typewriter and typing it up. It's, it is the age of the computers and we're trying to facilitate things better. So we, we can move things better for the public and, and better for the employees also. So can I please get a motion, please, in reference to authorize the $13,000 for the vital statistics software?
Motion trustee Albert.
Motion made by trustee Albert, second by trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Anything from the trustees today? Okay. All right. Okay. I guess I'll go. I just want to thank all the trustees for, 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 the budget was presented, you know, back in March there, but they, they were diligent in coming and asking questions with myself, but really mostly Mr. Janito, he's the expert. And they, they had questions and they, they, they had different concerns and they made sure that all their concerns were addressed. They made sure that, that, that the public's, that the public was, was being safeguarded, that, you know, being, giving a 0% tax increase is uncommon. But, but they, they looked through things and they, they were, from Mr. Hagan coming in, from Mr. Sablman to coming in, to Joe Corrigan, to, to Steve Albert, with many questions. And Mike Janito was able to answer them and explain why. And listen, we're going to strive to, if we can do the same thing next year, we're going to strive for it. But I won't say we can. But, but working as a team, bringing new things in, new projects. This board is very aggressive with recognizing that change is, is good for Suffolk and bringing in projects, huh? And, and they, I keep them informed and they keep me informed. And I, and I want to thank them. I want to thank them for that. I noticed, Fred, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just want to thank Mike Janito because he's always been so very gracious about allowing me to come to his office and speak to him anytime I want. And he explains everything to my complete satisfaction. So I want to thank you, Mike.
Very good.
I echo those sentiments myself. Thank you.
I'd also like to reference to the, again, under my mayor's update, Johan had presented, I guess, working with Charles, you know, from Public Works. They want to put something on, different on the vehicles, on the representing what, what they would like. They're taking pride in their work and they take pride in the village. So they've submitted something to the board and it's a start. We'll, we'll comment on it and talk about it. But I just want to, maybe I'll just, if I may, just hand them, maybe you can pass them. I don't have a bunch because we're not taking any votes on this now. I just want to share it with the, the public and the people.
Do you want to take mine to have more? I like it.
And again, this is, this is, you know, to start conversation on it. It might be the final piece. We just, we just don't know yet. But I, I wanted to, to share that with the public. And also, there's another thing I want to share. You know, the garbage men in sanitation department, they were, they work real hard out there, okay? And we have recycling and all these other things. So the county supplies you with different documentations that you can put on these different cans and stuff, okay? Which, so we're, we're going to see if we can maybe get the public to assist us with this and then put on the cans to make it easier for the sanitation department, for recycling, for just worried about conservation and, and people. So I know Johan is very concerned with this. Charles Zawiki is over there and, and the public is. So that's something else, you know, like the different ones that will say paper and cardboard recycling program and this. The other ones say different recycling things, food and beverage containers. It's just to give the public a little more education on it. And we work with the county on these things. So I just, I just wanted to point that out. And Joe's been diligent and, and keeping me informed in this and I, and I thank him, huh?
Do we have a lot of those?
We will, right? Joe, we can get as many as we want, correct?
Maybe.
Yeah, we will have.
Not for this weekend, but Battery Saturday and.
Well, we'll get, maybe we'll get them out there. We'll try to get them. Okay, Bruce, come on up. Make it quick, Bruce. I'm kidding, I'm joking, I'm joking. Got to walk quick.
Don't make me run. I'll throw out a hip. I just wanted to point out something for, for everybody here in the audience and everybody at home. I know the board members know. What recycling does besides the environmental component, there's a fiscal component to it. We pay a certain amount of money, and I don't know the exact dollar amount. We pay a tipping fee to dump garbage. We get money back for all the recycling that the village does. And for the past four or five years, we've either been the number one or number two recycling municipality in the county. We are back to number one, by the way. And it generates upwards of $24,000, $25,000 a year for the village. So there is a net plus, there is a net gain to recycling. It's not just a feel-good thing. We benefit, our taxes benefit from recycling. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Thank you, Bruce. Thank you, Bruce. As you can see, we're doing more family events with the village. It's been a key point of mine. Kathy's working on the basketball thing she talked about, the dare, they're, they're always, they're coming with COVID, you know, hopefully dissipating or going away. We're, we're back to doing things, like I said, the dare dances and different basketball tournaments. And then we're going to have our first ever, our Suffolk History Trolley Tour. It's going to be on May 14th. We're going to have a trolley that, you know, from like 12 to 4 in a, in a different times. I've talked with our historian Craig Long, and he's happy to actually work on the trolley. And there's, there's going to be no charge for the trolley. I'm going to go out there and, and beg for money and get donations, right? Or just, and if you want to go on a trolley, a donation will be accepted if you want to give something. If not, that's fine also. The idea, we don't have all the details worked out, but the idea is to, to maybe, and I'm not, if anyone doesn't know it, because I accidentally only booked the trolley today, all right? So we weren't sure what we could do or not do. So the idea is to stop at different locations and, and have a history tour and tell about all the different things that exist in Suffolk. Because Suffolk has a phenomenal amount of history that we need to share with the people that have been here, that, that can share it with us. Maybe people on the bus will say, oh, this was such and such also. They'll share their knowledge. And there's a lot of new people here. And I, and I always like to think whether you're here, moved in an hour ago, or you moved in, you know, 50 years ago. You're welcome and we want you a part of it and we want to bring you into the family. So that, that is a new thing. It's going to be, it's our first time. And then we'll see how exciting it is. And I think it's going to go well. There won't be, just be one tour. It'll go throughout, it'll, it'll go a few times throughout the day. We're going to decide how, how long the tour is going to be. And then we'll go from there. And then as, as Fred gets us grants for this, we'll be able to do two or three buses at the same time, okay? So, well, listen, I'm a dreamer, Fred. We got to dream. You got to believe. You got to, I'm a meth fan. You got to believe. Okay? So that's it on that. Any reason to go into executive session? Anyone need to go into executive session?
No.
No, at this time, I don't think either. So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Approve the minutes.
Oh, yeah. Well, I missed an item. I'm wrong. Can I get a resolution approving, approval of the March 7, 2022 Board of Trustees meeting minutes?
I so move.
Motion made by trustee Sablman, can I get a second, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, all right? I wrote, I wrote my history tour all over that one. I was excited about the, the trolley tour. That's why I missed it, all right? Okay, can I get a motion, please, to close the meeting, please?
Motion.
Motion made by trustee Hagan, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second made by trustee Sablman, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Have a great weekend, folks. A great week, a great day, and enjoy the history tour.